All right, Wes. Running for city council.
Yeah, that's correct.
What district is that?
That is second district, but it's really important to note that even though I'm running in the second district, it's a citywide election. So anybody in any of the districts can vote for for me no matter where they live.
Really?
Mm hmm. It's not just, second district's not the only one electing me. It'll be the whole city.
Okay, that's interesting. And I'm a little like, I don't live in the city.
Right.
So I've never like voted for city council or anything. But I've never lived in the city limits.
Okay.
Well, I guess that's not true. When I got in the air force, I was renting a house, but that was 25 years ago. But um, so I thought that you had to just vote within district for city, that city council.
No, no.
Member that's running or person that's running for council.
The nomination is from my district, so I had to get my signatures from my district. But when the ballot comes out November 7th, which I hope to see everybody at the polls voting for me, anybody in any district can can vote for me.
What are we running on?
The future of Manistee. You know, I've been in Manistee, you talked about 25 years out of the air force. I've been in Manistee, Manistee County for 25 years. And lived in the city for four or five years when I first got here in 98 and then moved out to Wellston, started my family. And moved back to the city on Third Avenue in 2019, just before COVID. And when I came back, it was, I was a little older, a little bit more mature, 20 years after I got here. And thinking, wow, this is a great place to live. And at that point, real shortly after coming back to the city, I thought that I wanted to be, I want to have a hand in making the future of the city. I've been in public service for 25 years. I am eligible to retire, you know, as of last April. I still plan to keep on working.
State police?
State police, yep. Been a long time since I seen a patrol car, though. I get in one of those now. I'm not sure I know how to even turn the lights on, but yep, state police. And it's really looking at my daughter. My daughter's 14, just turned 14 and a freshman at Manistee High. And as I drive through Manistee, whether it be on seeing people on the golf cart or the new businesses coming up, the new restaurants, new opportunities. I want to make sure that those opportunities in this place is as nice, I'd like to have it even nicer, when my grandkids are the age when they can come visit. That's really, it's, Manistee's in a good place now in a lot of ways. Like anything else, there can be improvements. But I want to make sure that Manistee is the shining gem that it is even more so, you know, 15, 20 years from now. And I think that's the vision I have.
15, 20 years from now, today, tomorrow, next month, whenever, me, me, what are you looking at trying to make an immediate impact on when you get on? When you get voted into council? This episode is brought to you by Chapo's Northside Bar, voted best burger and wings in town. Yeah, you heard that right. If you're gonna go out for a burger or wings or both, you might as well go to the place that's voted the best, the best. Why wouldn't you have anything less? Look, and if you're not down for a burger or wings, that's cool. They've got salads, wraps and sandwiches also. And this summer, it's gonna get wild because on June 24th, it kicks off their summer concert series in the parking lot. Live music, folks. And guess what? It's free. Yeah. Come down for the music, stay for the fun, enjoy the best burger and wings in town. Chapo's Northside Bar.
You know, immediate impact, that's, that's something I get asked quite a bit as far as, you know, what is wrong? Why are you running? I'm not necessarily running because something's wrong. We have a good city council. They're, they've done some great work. They're, I mean, look at all the new things, the new opportunities coming that have come to town. Immediate impact, I would like to see a little bit better communication between, you know, maybe city council or city hall, Chamber of Commerce, DDA, and you know, businesses coming in or businesses that are already here. We all know that as, as Manistee grows, it's becoming a little bit more and more touristy, which is not a bad thing. But when the businesses are expected or make most of their yearly income between, you know, June, July, August, maybe early September, there's a lot of lean months after those, after those haymaking months. And I really would like to see the Manistee as a whole realize that a little bit more and support those businesses and people because it's not just, we talk about supporting businesses. But these are our friends that are waitstaff. These are our friends that serve ice cream. These are our friends that, that, you know, do outdoor sporting goods or the sporting goods stores. We need to make sure that we really support them and that they have a vision of what they're going to do in those lean times. Because I had a constituent I was discussing the same thing with. Say 10, 15 years ago, winters in Manistee were winter. You had ice fishermen, you had snowmobiling.
Yeah.
When was the last time that we had a consistent, I hate to say hard winter, but a consistent cold snowy winter where we had the Crystal Mountain people all the time. We had the ice fishermen. I mean, we have Onakama. We've got, you know, all the lakes around here, you know, Portage Lake, all the lakes around here. Not quite, you know, it's kind of cutting into our, how we, how people make their money and how they survive in the off season.
So I mean, obviously you're not speaking about just about the weather. You're talking about trying to bring commerce
Oh, absolutely.
to Manistee in the air quotes off season. You know, aside from marketing the city, working with, you know, Manistee tourism. You know, to try to bring awareness to what we have to offer outside of the summer months here in Manistee and Manistee County. How do you see yourself moving that needle? Aside from just, you know, shaking hands and trying to open up lines of dialogue with, you know, they mentioned Manistee tourism.
Yeah. You know, I think it's, we've got some, some great industrial park areas in Manistee that are being underutilized. Whether it be the one right off of Golchusky Drive or even East Lake. I mean, there's lots of areas there for development. Traditionally, you know, in years past, it's getting better. Manistee has been known as a tough place to do business, a tough place to open a business. A lot of hoops, a lot of hurdles, a lot of, well, hey, that's not my job. Go talk to somebody else, but they don't tell you who to go talk to. I'd really like to see more collaboration and more, you know, it's, it's a, we're all working towards the same goal. I don't have an agenda. I don't have a magic pill that's gonna, you know, fix what the issues are in Manistee like, like, but Manistee has the same issues as any other community. It's jobs and retention, it's housing, it's childcare and it's drugs. Talk to anybody and that's gonna be on the list somewhere. Those four will be on the list somewhere.
Yeah, they're all on my list.
Yes.
You're a state police officer. You've been grinding that job out for some time now.
Right.
Let's talk about drugs in Manistee. Because it's wild, dude. And I'm sure you've got some stories, maybe some you want to share, maybe some you don't.
Right, right.
But we never had cases of Narcan lying around the city when I was a kid. I sound like that old person already, but when I was younger, but it's true, dude. I mean, we've got, okay, so your daughter's a freshman. I've got a senior, my son just turned 20. I've also got a second grader.
Right.
And they're facing things that we never had to face when we were younger.
Right.
You know, the little community never really had problems like this in the past. And that mean, I'm an early riser. I see a lot of shit before the sun comes up.
Right.
A lot of zombies walking around town.
Right.
Which is a little disheartening, say the least.
Yeah.
Certain, certain areas of the town, it's like, well, maybe wait till it gets a little brighter out before you go to. I mean, Jesus Christ, dude. This is Manistee. This is, like you said, this is the gem of the West Coast. How do we fix this problem?
You know, that, that again, is a very, it's a very large multifaceted problem.
Sure.
You know, being a police officer, I'd love to say, let's just hire more cops. That's, that's where we're gonna fix it.
Well, we need more cops.
Well, absolutely. I mean, absolutely. But that's not, not the magic pill that, you know, that you'd expect me to say. Community involvement. It's just like, you know, the okay to say, if you see something, say something. If you see a zombie walking around, say something. You know, give dispatch a call, give, give your local, you know, if your local police officer that you know a call. I mean, you and I've had these conversations, you know, back in the day. Hey, Wes, can you check into this? This, can you slide by? Can you have somebody? This is what I got. What do you think? I mean, we've done that. The days of the police officer being able to take care of all the issues, they'll just say drugs in Manistee. It's not, it's not fair and it's unrealistic expectations to level that on the police department. You know, again, short staffing plus, you know, truth and sentencing, there's, there's different, you know, there, there's a whole bunch of different things that have kind of eroded the police officer's ability to really affect that immediate change.
Yeah.
You know, the, the whole thing with drugs is, you know, it's a, whether it's alcohol, whether it's, you know, an opiate, it's a dependency. And I have, I ran the narcotics team up here for about three years. And I've talked to people that be just like you and I. And they'd be in a really a bad position. And I'd ask, you know, what, what drives you to do this? You have a family, you have a job, you have a business? What, what, what are you thinking? In a very, you know, conversation, just like you and I. And they said, Wes, unless you have that addiction, it is unexplainable. When I, when I need that fix, that is the only thing that matters. My kids don't care. My job don't care. That's the only thing that matters. And so whether that's more education, whether that's, you know, more, more support. And you know, the Narcan, we brought up Narcan. I have Narcan stashed around different places in my house and in my garage stashed in my cars. Because I, I know for a fact at some point in time, I'm gonna run up on a scene on off duty.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna be some, I'm gonna see somebody that that's gonna need that, that sort of treatment. That's that sort of, you know, to be safe like that. But I think it really has to do with the, the community being more involved. And that's, I think that's a good start.
Well, how do we get more involved?
Make those
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, make, make those calls. If you see something, you're zombie walking around that's, you know, doing something, you know, wrong or is, you know, a threat to themselves or others, make the call. Eyes and ears is what the police need because, you know, we can't expect the police department to roll through in a, in a, in a nice Tahoe or Explorer. And, you know, doors shut, people go, go to ground. It's, we need that intel. We need that information. And I'm not saying narc on people. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm not saying, well, my neighbor is doing this. He's got, you know, three marijuana plant. No, we're talking.
Nobody cares.
Exactly, exactly, exactly my point. But it's legal in Michigan. But it really, I think it boils down to a little bit of community involvement.
Yeah. I mean, when I say like, I'm, I'm just seeing people that are strung out. I mean, there's, there's no necessarily, there's no, that's the fuck word am I trying to? It's not necessary for me to call the police because somebody's just like, you know,
Yeah.
zoned out or whatever. It's the, it's, it's the, what happens when it, the addiction is to the point, like you said, with the people that you talk to, you know, like you don't understand, that's all you think about. Like, well, when they're out, then, then they're turning to things because they need money to get that product. And that turns into crimes.
And magic pill, don't have it. I, and it's one of those things that I, and I'm not sure. You hate to say I'm not sure there is a fix, but I, I don't know what the fix would be. Awareness for sure. You know, it's, it's make sure we know what our kids are doing. You know, the opioid prescription debacle of the last 20, 25 years.
Which is probably the reason or one of the
Good part of it. And, you know, depending how far you want to go into the weeds, what is a good, I mean, besides, you know, the opiate, the opiates be a pretty good way to, to degrade America a little bit.
Right.
Maybe that's, you know, a conscious effort being done from some of our adversaries. You know, it's lot, lot of multifaceted, lot, you could really get into the weeds on those.
We can go conspiracy if you want.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but, but you look at some studies that it's documented.
I hear you there. I mean, so we started talking about like infrastructure. We'll, we'll get away from the drug thing. Everybody knows it's bad. There is no magic pill for that. I agree with you with, you know, being aware and being a good citizen and trying to do our part as residents of Manistee to help, to help when we can, where we can. What about like, you know, infrastructure and stuff like that around the community?
Yeah, the, the big thing that we're, you know, Manistee is a historic community. Historic equals, you know, older. And the older something is, it's a lot more expensive to fix your, your, your 65 Ford Mustang than it is to fix your, you know, should be than to fix your, your 22 Ford Ranger.
Sure.
And I think we have to, we have to get people into this community and dig deep for people that want to see Manistee grow. And grow, what I mean is get better. I'm not necessarily saying people, more businesses. We, yes to both of those. But specifically here, talking about people that we need to invest. And I'm not just talking financial investment, like what you did. You've got a heck of a financial investment here, but you're also invested in the community.
Yeah.
You're not just here gonna plop down some money, get a business that does well and then start, you know, raking the proceeds out. Another one, a phrase from one of my good constituents, a good friend, we need investors, not harvesters. And I think that's
I've heard the term harvester before, which is super interesting when it comes to investing in, whether it's our town or your town. And I, I understand the definition of that in relation to
Right.
commerce.
Right. And I like it. That's, it's a good point. And with, with our infrastructure and whether it be older buildings, you know, there, there are things on the books, you know, the tax incentives, the, you know, the TIF financing that some people are against. You're gonna say 50% are against, 50% are for it. And I get my response to the, the people against it at this point is that if we don't do something with these buildings downtown, we all know there's a handful of buildings that you just drive by and go, oh, still, still. You know, we need to, you know, whether it be a local community member or an outside, you know, investor, and I'm using the term broad there, to come in and, and help rehab these buildings to make them, you know, beautiful again. I mean, can you imagine rolling through downtown and seeing all the, you know, as vibrant as it is now, you know, once say that, you know, the East End is complete and a couple of other buildings are, are brought back up to, up to snuff. Wow, talk about it. Talk about a gem.
Yeah, we've got about three, four, maybe five buildings that definitely need some, some help, you know, and, and, and as a property owner downtown, I get the, I get, well, I understand the want to make property look good. But I also recognize the cost in doing
Absolutely.
When Betsy and I bought our property, you know, we got a little bit of help with the facade grant. I mean, it was like 20 some thousand dollars to paint the property. I think I got like five grand, something like that. It helped.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it definitely helped. I'm not, I'm not complaining about that one bit, but the building needed to be painted. And so, okay, so let's spend $20,000 to paint it. And but you're right, they're so old, there's so much more involved with it. I can see why people are hesitant to invest in properties unless they're at enormous value for the dollar.
Or they, or they have a huge backing and I, and the other, one of the other things that I, I really feel strongly about. Again, it's not, it's not a new, it's not a new way to do things or a new way to, to attack the problem or monitor the problem. It's benchmarks. We don't want to say, hey, James, here's $20,000, go paint your building. And then you do one side and we have no, the city, the citizens, taxpayers have no recourse. So wait, wait a second, you didn't, we gave you $20,000, you didn't, didn't finish the job. So I'm all about specific benchmarks. You know, you, you know, just like, just like a construction loan. Okay, you get this much until you get this much and this done, then you get this and you get this. You know, I think we just need to be, which again, all goes down to communication and collaboration. With, even with the investor, with, you know, with the, the people doing the work. You know, is there, is there an illness? Is there a funding issue? Is there, are they running this? This needs to be a little bit more open lines of communication.
Definitely always a funding issue.
Oh, absolutely.
Like when you say, you know, the taxpayers look at it, but like, the business owners are also paying taxes and my property taxes here are, you know, I've said it before a few times. I mean, they're 12, $13,000 a year. So if there was a way to directly use my tax money to make improvements to the property, I'd 100% do that. You know what I mean? If there was a way for, even if I was to pay the city, my tax bill for the next three years, and then they said, we're gonna give you 80% of it back as long as you make these improvements. Fuck, yeah. 100%.
Yeah.
Or 75% or 50% back. Like we'll use it more as a savings. The city gets the tax money.
Right.
They can accumulate some interest on all of that.
Right.
And then
Not a bad idea.
Kick back a little bit
Right.
to us that are, you know.
Yeah, bear, bear in the work, bear in the workload for sure.
Cause I'm all for tax abatements. I'm all for, you know, helping another, you know, investment come in to the community. Like you said, that's not gonna harvest, but that's going to stay. But I was so like ignorant to the process when we were developing our company. You know, I don't know what I could have received if I'd have done my due diligence.
Right.
I know how much personal money we put in.
I mean, you, you hit, you hit the, you summed it up really well there, James. I mean, it's, if you would have had somebody, you know, I'd like, I'd love to see a one stop shop. And then other people have talked about this in the past. It's, but again, then it becomes, you know, is that a position? Is that something that somebody takes on, kind of takes, hey, James, under their wing, you know, from the city, whether it be the DDA or, you know, somebody from the city or just another business owner.
Yeah.
There's lots of ways it can be done. And that's, yeah, it's, I cannot imagine opening a business like this and the, you know, the, the investment in time and, and, and financial investments that you've had. I mean, it looks great, done a great job. It's, it's a cornerstone, literally. You know, we love this place. So, but yeah, it's, there's room for improvement.
You know, I think that, that, so there's a puzzle and there's pieces everywhere. And like you can talk to this person with the DDA who's gonna have a wealth of knowledge, this person at the Chamber of Commerce who's gonna have a wealth of knowledge to help you there. There's people that work inside the city as far as permitting and kind of giving you an outline. But it's always like, this is my piece. I'm done with my piece. Maybe you should go talk to this person. Like, I've often thought of, if there was just like a, a rulebook. Not a rulebook, like a playbook. A playbook would be good. Like here's, you know, 60 pages of, this is 100% what you would need to know, what you should do and what we suggest you do before opening. Like you're building a business plan. You know, let's take a look at all these things that we need. Like I didn't know I needed to have like a business permit after I bought everything. I mean, that sounds really like ignorant, but I mean, it didn't cost that much money.
Yeah.
But it's like, okay, I gotta get that and then a permit for this.
One more thing.
Yeah, one more thing.
And I think we have that. This is a shameless plug for the DDA. I know Mark Miller does some of that sort of stuff and is a wealth of knowledge and, you know, people speak really highly of him. I mean, I speak highly of him. I mean, very, you know, very, very smart gentleman. You know, so I think we're starting to get there. But we can do better. And so I, yeah, that's, you're exactly right. I want, it'd be nice to have one person that's okay. This is the person that oversees the whole process of getting, of getting our, our investment, you know, people, you know, our, you know, investment, whether it be businesses, corporations, whatever happens to be. You know, this is kind of, kind of, kind of the coach. I got the playbook. This is what you need. This is what you need to do. Okay, I will get it, coach. You know, something like that. That's, that's a great idea. And I'd love to see something like that. Which kind of goes back to what I said earlier. Manistee has sometimes not been known as the most friendly place to open a business or, or, or get started.
Where do you think that comes from? Cause I hear that all the time.
I don't know. That's one of those where I've really never asked a question, well, why do you say that? And, you know, I've asked the question, but I get the same responses as you just. Well, I gotta go to this person for this, this person for this. And then they said, oh, you gotta go back to the start for this. And it's, it's almost like, you know, at, at one point it was a runaround. Again, I think it's a lot better. Now I'm hearing it's a lot better. But again, you know, I think one of the most dangerous, uh, one of the most dangerous phrases in, in business or even in personal life as well. But we've always done it that way.
Yeah.
Just because we have does not mean there's not a better way. And I, you know, again, we talked about, you know, 20, 25 years here as, as a, as a state employee. I've done a lot of things. We've just always done it that way. And I catch myself saying, ooh, all right, let's, let's, let's rethink this. So maybe it's just a unawareness. Maybe it's, you know, it's a, it's a, could be a generational thing. It just a lot, a lot, a lot of possibilities there.
So I mean, in a nutshell, I mean, you're, you're pro commerce. You're pro investing in, into the city. I mean, is there anything that, that you would be like, no, 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 I don't think that that should come, that should happen, that we should do that? What are the things that you, you'd rather not see, I guess? I mean,
You put me on the spot there. I'm open as long as I can be shown a business plan and the way it would, anything would benefit Manistee. You know, we, I'm not sure there's anything that I would, I mean, cause we've got, you know, we've got Manistee Lake, we've got the, you know, the businesses, the corporations there, you know, PCA, Martin Marietta. Anything, anything that's on the table, just to, not to say it'll be approved, but I'd be willing to talk to anybody. You know, geez, how long's Manistee Beverage been here?
Since 2017.
So 17. So if I would have been on the council in 2017 and, hey, we want to put in a, a party store, liquor store, beverage center right in one of the, you know, biggest corners in Manistee, the most well-known corners. What would my initial reaction be? Or what were people's initial reaction? Ooh.
Their initial action were like, that's not what we need.
Exactly.
You know.
Right. But look what you've done for the community.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's kind of my example to where, oh no, not another, not another liquor store, you know, liquor store. I know it's a lot more than that, but it's, but I think you need to, you know, the other thing is no agenda. My agenda is no more big businesses, no more pizza stores and no more dollar stores in Manistee.
Just like hot button, hot button on Facebook.
I'm gonna get lit up for that, aren't I?
We're gonna clip that and that'll be the one we put out and then everybody's like, Wes doesn't want any big businesses or pizza places.
Yeah. No. Oh, yeah. But they, they serve a purpose. They, if they didn't, they wouldn't be put in. And, you know, people talk about the hotel downtown or the hotel on First Street. I think it looks great. I love it. You know, I'd love to be able to bring, you know, my, my peers, my counterparts in from around the state, put them up there in, in a nice hotel. There's other nice hotels around the area, don't get me wrong. But that's kind of a new one, right on, right on the, you know, right on the water.
Yeah.
Holy moly, I can rent, rent that, that conference room, bring 30, 40, 50 people in there, wine and dine them, you know, downtown, you know, after hours, we can walk, we can take, we can take Z's golf carts. So many options.
Shout out to Z's Golf Carts. Yeah, that, that hotel, I mean, that, I don't think that's anything anybody should try to die on the sword with. I mean, cause that, that, that place is, even as a business owner, I've had, I've had customers since they opened coming to the store. And the only reason why they came to me is because the Hampton was there. Cause their Hampton rewards or whatever.
Right.
And it brought them to the community.
Right. And, and you look at, you know, things that Manistee has done and I get, we, we want to be a sleepy community. We, we don't want to be, you know, Traverse City, nothing against Traverse City, anybody wanting to Traverse City. But we don't have the infrastructure or, well, I don't think Traverse City has the infrastructure for what Traverse City has. So people, you know, constituents are like, well, hey, we, we don't want to lose our identity as a small town.
I don't think we will, though. I don't think the town's built that way.
No, no. And yes, summers are, which you can attest to, I'm sure by numbers and by people coming through your door, summers are getting busy, are busier. And post-COVID, there's a whole lot of things, you know, in the, in the play there. But a lot of people in town in the summer. And, you know, these people are tourists, but besides that, then remember, we didn't, people didn't want the casino. People didn't want the prison. People didn't want Hampton. People didn't want this and that. Which kind of goes back to, well, we've always not had that. It's, that's never been here. And I'm absolutely not, not criticizing the people that want, wanted to stay a small town. But we have to stay alive. We don't want to turn into a ghost town. We've lost a lot of small mom and pop businesses. You know, you go up and down Division and River Street. These places that were institutions, you know, that because they aged out. I mean, they retired. Great for them. You know, maybe one day you and I can do that, should retire. But we just have to, we can't keep losing, you know, you know, small town institutions and not replacing them with something. You know, we've got Culvers coming in, we've had Myers, you know, the, the different coffee shops in town. You've got Port City Brew, which they're a nice new facility there, great location. You've got Big B. A lot of, a lot of cool things happening and it's, it's nice to see.
Yeah, I remember when like McDonald's came to town. That was huge.
Yeah. Remember McDonald's used to be, we were growing up, you know, we're gonna go out for eat on a Friday night. We drive 30 miles to, from Fremont to Muskegon to McDonald's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd make, we'd make a trip to Luddington.
Yep.
That's when Luddington had it first and then, and then we got one, we got one here in Manistee. I'm gonna try not to lose my train of thought because you were on a nice little point there with commerce and everything. And everything is in, in terms of when we do our most business for most, for most businesses in Man, city in Manistee and in the, in the county at large, is in the summer. Do you think that you could find a way to help increase awareness for the off season? To help shed a light on the city and the county, you know, in those months that, you know, non-summer months, for all the things that we do have to offer, cross-country skiing, you know, mountain biking, the snowmobile trails. you know, mountain biking, the snowmobile trails. Connect the, can, the trails that we're working on connecting now currently, uh, moving the, the rail, the railway over so that we can, we can increase that trail system and things like that, working with Manistee Tourism to, um, to help promote Manistee, city of Manistee and the county.
Yeah.
Recreationally, I guess is what I'm saying.
You, I mean, you kind of hit the nail on the head. It's, it's a lot of it is just being, you know, the Manistee Tourism. Uh, I know the Pure Michigan Campaign. And you're right, we have, I, I had a cough on a tangent here. I, I met a, uh, Sugar, Sugar Tips Duo. They played at, um, the North Channel Brewing a few weeks ago. And great sounds. A guy came up to me and, you know, the, the head singer, lead singer and was talking to me. And I said, what, you know, I just kind of started to get into, you know, running for city council. And I said, hey, what, why, why did you, why are you here? It's like, well, be honest, I was heading to, I think north to like Traverse City and I was gonna stop in Luddington. And, uh, there was no rooms there. He said, so.
No room at the inn.
Yeah. So then I went to, uh, he came to Manistee. He's like, and you know what? I didn't leave for a week because he, he just was enamored by what we had here. And that's, that's true. And that, that was probably a summer season. I'm not exactly sure when he was up. But I, I think it's, it's up to us as a community to be welcoming. You know, the, the summer dollars are different than the winter dollars. I mean, we all know that. And we have a lot, because Manistee is kind of, a lot of its, you know, at least some of the, most of the down, a lot of the downtown is geared towards that, you know, that, that summer tourism dollar. I mean, I'm talking to restaurants.
Yeah.
It means, meaning I'm talking about, um, lined up and down river streets. Great to see, great options. You know, I, I would really hope that they would adjust menus for the fall. You know, I hate to say more of a local friendly menu, but okay, a local friendly menu. They, they, you know, offer some, you know, some specials or some, uh, you know, some baskets or whatever, not to try to lure some of the, you know, the, the dollars out of, uh, you know, from, you know, locals during, during that lean time. And like we talked about, you know, the weather, it's, but again, you have, again, you talked about the big M, you talked, you know, you got the rusty fish, you've got the run the pier. You got all these things that kind of happen throughout the summer towards the fall. I think we're on the right path. Do we have a winter mountain bike race, you know, a fat tiger race? Uh, and then, you know, they got the iceman coming up, up north. Do we do something like that here? Yeah.
Well, it just might.
Oh, yeah. Yes. It, it's, it's communication collaboration all, all over again. And that's, that's kind of, that's kind of my main, my, really one of my main themes is we just have to talk about it. We have to, cause I don't have all the answers. You have some great, great perspective. Oh yeah, we should do this, this and this. You know, it's, it's nothing that we can't weather, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's changing, just like the seasons. And it'd be nice to see a nice, good, hard winter to, to have, you know, to have, you know, all, you know, all those tourists that come up for, you know, the, you know, Crystal Mountain, you know, world-class skiing up there. Be great to see.
Yeah. And I'd love to see more people, you know, that are in the snowmobiling, stuff like that, find their way towards, especially now with the Hampton.
Right.
You know, fill up these hotels here, in town and then work your way out.
Right.
And how can we encourage them to come in, you know, get a little bit more excitement about ice fishing? Cause there's so much shit to do in this community. And I get it. That's a small pocket of people. I mean, that's not summer people. We were probably talking about like, you know, 5% of people that are really into that stuff. But we need to find a way to capture that business because they're going other places for sure.
And it's hops and props is a good example. It's a tremendous amount of work and they've done such a great job on that. I was really sorry to see that, you know, bypass this year. I get it. Absolutely get it. But those things that are kind of scheduled more towards the fall, I mean, look at our sleigh bell parade, our sleigh, our sleigh bell weekend. Huge numbers, huge numbers. You know, do we do, you know, some other little, you know, kind of small town, you know, atmosphere type celebrations for?
Yeah. I mean, the, uh, the local, the downtown business merchants, um, have been, you know, there's a group of them that have really been working towards creating some type of fall, winter, you know, festival.
Right.
I know Anita Schaefer down at, uh, Port City Emporium is kind of spearheading a nice little Halloween festival. That's kind of grown. I mean, there's a bunch of events going on over that holiday. Weekend where we do trick or treating and everything here in downtown Manistee. So that's really exciting. They've been talking about trying to uh, get some stuff together for like January, February.
Right.
Doing something downtown like, you know, years past. I know that we did things like chili cook-offs and stuff like that, which were rad. It sounds so small town, but I love it.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Um, sure. I'd love to see some stuff like that brought back. And really what that does is it kind of just cultivates that community. Let's get everybody from, as many people from Manistee to come and enjoy downtown and, uh, enjoy the city and come together. So. But we need volunteers for that.
Right.
You know, we need working volunteers that are down to, to do that kind of work. And, you know, that's been difficult to put together.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Everybody's, everybody's, you know, taxed to the max as far as what they have on their plates, you know, we, we get it. I mean, with young families, we, we, I understand, you understand.
You know, like a good one, I mean, this isn't, this isn't, uh, fall or winter, but it's the Gus Macker. I mean, that's been a little bit of a, of a, uh, hot topic. I mean, there's, there's people that absolutely want it. There's people that absolutely don't want it. I don't really think there's anybody that really caught in the middle on that. I'm on, you know, full disclosure, I want it. You know, I, I've been fortunate to be able to play in multiple Gus Mackers when I was younger. Even when I was getting up there.
Right.
In my twenties and thirties, I still played and I think it'd be wonderful to have it here. I'd love to play in it. But I've been polled a few times by some people that like, hey, you should get on the, uh, the committee for the Gus Macker. And, uh, that's a big time commitment.
Right.
Right? So I mean, I, I call to action. I'd love to say, hey, if there's people out there that want to get involved with the Gus Macker, jump on board with that, please. You know, I've got three businesses and two, two massive events that I put on already. So.
Right.
I just can't do it. I want to do it.
Right.
But like Betsy, my wife, she's like, just, I can't have you do that too. You know, I need you, I need you around.
Right.
Um, but what are your thoughts on the Gus Macker? Honestly?
Yeah. The logistics of it make me, give me, give me pause. Uh, and you, you hit the nail on the head. You know, people, the people have great ideas and I'm not saying people have great ideas. That's kind of, that's not the way I mean it to come out. There are great ideas out there. Uh, even the rusty fish. It takes a little bit of people. I mean, you're polling the community for six months or a year in advance. Hey, can you, can you do this? Can you do that? The volunteer commitment.
It's huge.
For the Gus Macker is huge. I'm just not sure we can do it.
Well.
But.
That's where I'm gonna disagree with you. I think we can do it. Even if I'm not
Right.
part of the committee or anything, uh, I think, I think we really can. I look at small, smaller communities like Frankfurt that just did the Ironman.
Are you talking about having it here in the city?
I think that there's, uh, there's places to have it on the smaller scale. Like for example, I think if we just started with the 200 team concept, uh, you're, you know, you're only looking at 50 courts.
Right.
Or a hundred courts or whatever.
Only.
It, it, yeah. But like in the, when you, when you have a six to 800
Right.
team, Macker.
Right.
I mean, it's huge. And then we could utilize spaces like the parking area down at the beach. People are gonna lose their fucking mind because I said that, but it's true. But, you know, I've been to communities the size of Manistee.
Right.
I played in over in the thumb. I played in like Cadillac, Luddington's a little bit bigger than Manistee, but I played in that one for years, for 15 years. And I played in that. And you had a little, some side streets, you know, all down by the beach. They take it all the way around their, their beachfront. And it, it's cumbersome for the people that don't want it. It's not so cumbersome for the people that are down for it.
Right. I see pluses and minuses. I'd, I'd want to talk to, if elected on November 7th, shameless plug. It's gonna be past that point for me. So this is gonna be the current city council that, that's, that's fielding this. I'd want to really talk to Luddington, talk to those communities that, that have it or had it.
Yep, I agree.
And say, why, it gets it, why is, why isn't it, if it's so great to have, why isn't it down in Luddington next year? And I'm pretty sure it's gonna be the people that, uh, spearheaded it, just like, you know, any other large festival. They got tired.
They got tired.
And so, okay, it's time to pass the torch. And if there's not somebody there willing to grab that torch, James Boudry. Sorry, Betsy. Nah, nah, she's gonna kill me. Uh, but it's not something I would say no to. I, I, I need some more information on. I mean, it's be a heck of a, heck of a boom, but man, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
I agree. I agree. A lot of that, you know, it takes up a lot of space, takes up, you know, it's the, the hardest part I, I really think is cultivating the volunteers.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause you'd need a few hundred volunteers for that, for that whole weekend.
Yep, absolutely.
And a city the size of ours, you know, if the, if the tournament is in the summer, you know, we could probably garner some non-resident or part-time resident volunteers for sure. You know, cause we boom a little bit
Right.
in the summer. But yeah, if we were just dependent on the 6,500 or 6,800 residents in the city of Manistee. I mean, we can pull from the county for that. Certainly people will come in to, to volunteer. But yeah, there's gotta be some kind of incentive to volunteer for sure.
Absolutely.
I don't know. So you're on the fence.
I'm on the fence on that one. I was initially like, heck yeah, let's do it. And then looked into a little bit more. Yeah, I just, I, I gotta look into it a little bit more. I'd have to be, have, had to be, I'd have to have, be privy to some of the, you know, the, again, the in the weeds numbers and then volunteers and.
Policing it?
Yep.
You know, that's huge.
Yep. Yep.
Well, to kind of go back to the beginning when we were talking, since I brought the policing aspect of that, I know that we're gonna be short, we're already short city police officers. And, um, we've got a, a couple that are looking at retiring, you know, by the end of the year or shortly after the end of the year. You know, how, how, how are we going to ensure that we're gonna have a fully staffed police force? Where do you sit on like pay increases and stuff like that for them? Cause I know like, you don't have anything to do with the county is in terms of like, once you take on this role. But, uh, being a state employee, it's a little different. Your pay scale is different than the city PD. It's different than the sheriff's department here.
Right.
And I know that they're always jockeying for more money because those officers or those sheriff's deputies can find it a little bit better in a different community in terms of a benefits package and stuff like that.
Right. And I, I think, you know, as of late, and again, I don't have the, you know, the, you know, the city benefit numbers or the city pay numbers in front of me. You know, there's contract negotiations there, POAM members, I believe that's their, their, their union. That are always fighting just, just like, you know, for state employees, you know, their, their unions and their associations. It's, it's a, which, kind of broken record here. It's a nationwide problem. You know, back in the day, uh, you got, you became a police officer because you had, you served your community. Plus you had decent wage and plus you had a pension and healthcare.
Yeah.
Like anything else, you, any other big business, any other, you know, corporation, any other, you know, government entity. A lot of those, a lot of those benefits are, are eroding. Which, you know, selfishly, I'm like, well, that's wrong, but there are a lot of people that have even less. Uh, you talk about insurance premiums. I mean, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you don't want to get into that conversation. But the city, you know, the city of Manistee has always been, you know, the police department has always been, you know, has never, I've never heard anything really bad about it. And, you know, from, you know, Chief Bachman, I think was the first chief when I was here, then, then Chief Colesel and now Chief Glass. Uh, you know, the, the hand-in-hand workmanship with the county, with the tribe, with the state is good to see. So what does that have to do with, you know, you know, with, with retaining employees? I think it's job atmosphere. You have to have a reason for people to be here. And yeah, there's, you know, whether it's family reasons or you're a boater or you're a skier or you're a mountain biker. Yeah, there's no, would I entertain pay increases, you know, commensurate? Absolutely. I mean, you know, absolutely. Because those, those guys and gals are out there day and night. You're dealing, you're seeing the, the zombies at, you know, seven, eight o'clock in the morning and your morning run. They're dealing with them at, you know, one, two and three in the morning, when they're in the midst of whatever nefarious, uh, activities they're, they're doing. So I think it's absolutely something to consider. Again, a magic pill, don't have it. And the old days, you know, people wanted, you know, the young kids, hey, what do you want to be? I want to be a firefighter. I want to be a police officer. I want to be Superman or Spider-Man. That's what they used to, that's what it was.
I think a lot of them still want to be Superman and Spider-Man, but a lot of them are like, I don't want to be a police officer anymore because of the bullshit you gotta deal with.
Yeah. And then some of it, yeah, I'm gonna get skewered for this. Some of it has been brought upon ourselves. But for every, you know, mistake or bad decision you see a police officer make, there are 14 million decisions that, that aren't captured in camera and played again and again and again and again. Absolutely does not excuse that, that bad decision, that, that lapse of judgment, that, that violation of that rights. I absolutely agree with that. That, that's not an excuse for that. But it's just, it's so, so now all you see is anything bad that a police officer does. And that's, that's troubling.
Think a cop, kids. Think a cop.
Just like anybody else.
I love it. Hey, before we wrap up, so you've got how much time before you can retire? If you decide to retire?
I, I could have retired with a full tour, uh, April of this year. So I, I am on a deferred retirement program. I will, if I do the full six years, I can do up to six years, uh, April 29th, 2029. Not that I know the date by heart. Which matches up pretty well with when my daughter finishes high school and is in college for a year or two. So yeah, I've got, I've got my time in. Um, I still have a quote unquote a day job. So that's making, you know, this, uh, the, the city council run a little bit more. I didn't realize it'd be quite as intensive as it is.
Sure.
But I love it and it, it's engaging in the community. So it's fun. It's, it's kind of, what I see is my next step. That's what I want to do. But yeah, I was, I was eligible to go in, in April of this year.
If elected, how do you think that will, uh, change your mindset in terms of whether you stay or you retire?
I anticipate staying. Um, again, family reasons. What, what is nice with, you know, I've got enough time built up and I, and I accrue enough annual leave time. It's like, like today. Uh, it's, it's a Wednesday. You know, I'm on, I'm on vacation time for the first couple of hours this morning to, to, you know, to do this. So I, I have a lot of time I can use. And you know, my, at this point, you know, it's obviously a completely separate, you know, day job versus other day job.
Yeah.
A lot of the things that the city council does is, is evening, which is really nice. Um, I know there's been other people who've had, you know, full-time state jobs, you know, Chip Goodspeed was on city council. So it is doable. You know, my, my wife may not appreciate some of the after-hours activities, but you know, she'll, she, she supports me too. So. Kind of like Betsy, right? You gotta do what?
She's all in, yeah. She's not all in with me spreading myself thin, but she's all in with, you know.
Yeah.
Like how, how can we do?
Right.
How can we do the most good with the time that we have?
Right, absolutely.
That's, that's super important. And for anybody listening, if you're trying to do anything, you know, trying to be involved in the community or just trying to be a super solid human, how much good you can do with the time you have.
It's balance and there's weekends that, again, the last couple of months, get done with the weekend and it's Sunday afternoon and getting things ready for school for work on Monday. And wasn't, wasn't it just Tuesday, Wednesday? Where, where did the weekend go?
Goes by fast.
You know, I'm on the harbor commission. So this last week we had the, the marina open house, which really looked great. I mean, they've done a ton of work. Uh, Manistee Proud and, and other, the, the community and the business volunteers that have donated to that, to that marina. Man, that looks sharp and the numbers are going up on that. So that's another little, little gem besides the, the normal summer activities people kind of forget about is, is the marina. So, you know, the waterways. So that's great, great to see that too. But balance, um, giving back to the community, supporting the community. Not just, uh, we, we touched on the volunteerism. It's not just, hey, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll do this, but I'll, you know, I'll attend this, this program or this, this event. You know, put your money where your mouth is and volunteer, step up and, and make this community even greater than it really is.
And this is not a blanket event by you or a statement by you, because I know that you volunteer.
Yeah.
You help me out with the, the races that we put on. You volunteered for, for other events. I, I see you out there volunteering. So I mean, that's, that's just not a, you're just not telling other people to do that work. You're doing that work. So I appreciate that for sure.
Thanks, James.
Hundred percent, man. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, to seeing what happens with the election for sure. I can't vote.
Yeah, no.
You know, I live in Filer.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's, that's, I appreciate the support. And if anybody has any questions, uh, uh, search me up on Facebook. Uh, or get ahold of, of Tracy, uh, get ahold of James. I mean, I'm willing to talk to anybody. But the biggest thing is it's a citywide vote and November 7th, I really could use your support.
So I feel dumb. I feel like a caveman. I didn't, I thought you had to just vote in your, for your, you know, so if there were multiple people in your district running for council, that's who you got to choose from. I didn't realize. Is that new? That can't be new.
That's new. Nope. Yeah, whatever.
Well, vote for Wes.
Please.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, if I'm. Yeah. Uh, I mean, if I'm gonna give a, uh, you know, a stamp of approval, uh, I'd put it on you, brother.
All right. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. If I could vote, you'd get my vote.
Appreciate it. Thanks, man.
Thank you, brother. Let's get you to sign the board, dog.
All right.